I want Jim to be able to see the robot.
This is really cool.
Everybody wants to see the robot.
For sure. That's so cool.
Called order the April 11th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome on this sunny, beginning of spring, summer evening. First order of business, item one, point to adoption of the agenda. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna move into, not to suggest that the rest of the agenda is not a highlight, but the highlight of the night, item 2.1, student recognition with winter activities. Think we're gonna invite Mr. Fink to introduce our friends from Irondale. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, we have three different groups from Irondale that we're representing. We have, obviously, we have a robotics group here. Little surprised that our robot's here, but we're glad to have it.
Am I being replaced by a robot? Is that happening like right now on camera?
I don't know. And then we have our, oh geez, Winter Guard and our Drum Line, who are finishing up their seasons, but they have some exciting details to share with everyone to kinda let you know where they're headed and what their goals are for the rest of the season. So, kids take over.
Well, hi. I'm Lexi. I'm a junior. This is my third year on Nightcrawler, and I'm our team captain.
And I'm Matt. This is my fourth year on the team. I'm a senior, and I'm the Control/programming captain.
Yeah, so just for a little bit of background, first robotics is what Nightcrawler is. It is a global STEM sport. We make a robot every year. We bring it to competitions. We compete with and against other robotics teams to try and earn the most points in the brand-new game every year. So, this is our robot this year, Cicada.
Yeah, so at the beginning of the season, the game gets revealed, so it's a new game every year. And then we have six weeks of build season to complete our robot before we host our own Week Zero event. So, other teams in the area come to Irondale High School to compete in our Week Zero event, and then...
Yeah, so this year, we had thirty-two teams attend in the Varsity Gym. Our volunteers spent, five, parent volunteers spent five hundred hours building a seventy-five-by-twenty-five-foot field. It was an amazing experience for all who attended, both robotics teams and members of the community, to come understand what robotics is, see us play. Really great experience. And after that, the next week, we went to our first regional in Duluth, which was a resounding success. We ranked second, ended up on the first-ranked alliance, and won the regional.
Yes, we should specify, the actual matches are three-v-three, so you're on an alliance with three other, or two other robots. So, it's a very competition-based sport, but also cooperation. So, you never know, you might be playing against someone who's on an alliance with you in the previous match. It fluctuates a lot, and yes, we ended up playing first in that, and then...
Yeah, so we won that regional, which qualified us for World Championships, which we will be attending next week down in Houston. Very excited for that twenty-two-hour bus ride. But, we also attended another regional down at the U of M in early April. That was the Minnesota Ten Thousand Lakes Regional. In that regional, we ranked first, so we were the captain of our alliance in the finals. We picked the same robot that we won with in Duluth, and a really small team. They only have eight people, and so they also, because we won that regional as well, that really small eight-person team now also gets to qualify for Worlds, so, very exciting. I believe it's their first year that they've ever done that. Yeah, and so what we're coming up to is, next week, we will leave and attend the first World Championships in Houston, Texas. After that, on May 6th, because of our regional wins, we have qualified for the Minnesota High School League State Competition, so that takes place in May. We're looking forward to that.
Yeah, and a tiny little bit about the backstory of our team. So, we are, there's one other team that was founded before us in the state of Minnesota, so we've been around for a while, founded in 2007, so this is our seventeenth year competing. So, we have a lot of experience. Our team has been around for a while, very well-known around the state by other first robotics teams, and a lot of teams come to us for help. We like to kind of be sort of mentors for other teams. We've had teams come to our space, use our resources, and we've helped other teams be able to compete in competitions, as well as helped other teams get up and started. So, we've started smaller FTC teams, so that's like a step below FRC, which is what we're doing. We've also helped other teams get off the ground, as well as get certain components of their robot working.
Yeah, and we facilitate that by really fostering inter-team relationships. So, you know, as Control's captain, Matt has helped multiple teams with, you know, aspects of their robot for driving. We call it Swerve. On the other side, though, we also host a weekly virtual discussion that any team in Minnesota can attend and really bring forward any issues, any things that they're struggling with, goals that, you know, they want some feedback on. It's a great space. And in addition to that, we really work to further STEM within our community. So, for example, today, right before I came here, I was actually running a Girl Scout badge with some other team members down at St. John the Baptist, where we had eleven girls, and they got to, you know, work through prototyping, and then they played catch with our 2016 robot. So, it's a lot of fun, and we do that kind of thing at the farmer's market during the summer. And we also, you know, we'll actually go around to other Moundsview District elementary schools, bring our robot, bring some slides, educate about STEM.
So, did we get to see this robot do something, or does it require more space?
Well, we can, we won't run it, but we can show you...
Does it want the gavel?
So, this year, the game was, there's basically three levels of either poles or platforms. You score the cones on the poles, the cubes on the platforms. At the beginning of every match, there's fifteen seconds of autonomous, where the robot drives itself around the field using different sensors. So, we have three different cameras that were detecting different objects, so we can detect the cones, the cubes, as well as reflective tape and April tapes. So, using all those different inputs, as well as encoders, all the motors to track where we've been and where we're going. And then, after that point, scoring works with this elevator going up to the top level, and then the intake will come out, and spring loads, it's still hanging out, but, like, just like that. And then we'll outtake the score. And about one to two seconds is how long it takes to score, as well as this hammer here, which will line us up perfectly with the cone, wherever it is an intake, as well as the pole. And then we can do the same thing with the cube, where we hold on to it, and then score like that. And then there's also a balancing, kind of a balance beam in the middle of the field, where you get endgame points, so at the end of the match, if you're balanced on that kind of balance beam with up to three, or up to three robots on there, you get extra points for that. So, we have sensors inside the robot that detect the pitch of the robot, so we can drive up, detect where we're dropping in pitch, stop the robot, and then drive back if necessary. So, that's kind of the design this year.
Super cool. Thank you for being here. Congratulations on the success. Good luck in Houston and at the High School League Championship. Very, very cool. Thank you.
Super cool. Thank you.
I also wanna say thank you for hosting and being mentors to everyone else. To me, I feel like, I love winning, right? Anybody who knows me knows I'm super competitive, so I mean, kudos to you guys for winning. But to me, that win, when you can help someone else learn and grow their skillset, like, that's like rewarding work as well. So, I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out, that that's phenomenal you guys are doing that.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Hello, my name's Ella Johnson, and I'm with the Irondale Winter Drum Line, and this is my fourth year marching with them. And I play marimba, and I'm center marimba, so it's kinda like being first chair in orchestra.
Oh, my name is Isaiah. I'm a senior. I've been marching for four years, and I am the, like, section leader of the battery, which is like all the drums that march around on the floor.
Yeah, so there are forty-six students in our Drum Line, and we're from Irondale, Moundsview, and St. Anthony, so we're a combined schools kinda thing. And each year, we put on a show, which is usually like five minutes long, and this year, our, like, theme, or it's called Made to Measure, and the theme is like tailoring and sewing, and it's a lot of fun. And we have music from, like, Jason Mraz and Weezer in our show, along with like some classical pieces, and we put it all together and perform a really cool show.
Yeah, so currently, we are undefeated in the state, including winning the state championship with the highest score of any Minnesota group this season. This Saturday, if you'd like to come see our show, we have a free send-off show at 7:00 PM in the Irondale Varsity Gym. And next week, we are going to Dayton, Ohio, to the World Championships. So, that's kind of like our last big thing this season to wrap it up.
Very cool. Thank you for being here. Congratulations, and good luck.
Good luck.
And Sarah, can you send out information on Saturday, 7:00 PM? That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hello.
I'm Vanessa, and this is my fifth year, fifth year doing Color Guard.
Oh, hi, I'm Chloe. This is my seventh year. We're both freshmen, so we've been doing this for a long time.
Winter Guard, or commonly known as Color Guard, is basically this type of, like, dance or choreography, where we all, like, a good group of, like, a good amount, like fifteen, sixteen, nineteen people all come together and we dance together, but we also incorporate things as like equipment, like flag, saber, rifle, and we incorporate that to, like, just dance and tell a story of whatever theme we want. Our show this year is called...
Something of Ourselves.
Something of Ourselves. It's a show that represents about, like, longing for something, longing for someone, and how, like, when you have that person, it's really something that you really need. And the thing is, Color Guard is something that I personally love. I've worked with Color Guard for a good five years. I started in third grade, and Color Guard has always just been something with me.
Yeah, my story with Color Guard is, is my sisters were doing marching band at Irondale. We're well past now, but I was up there as like a second grader, and I just saw the group of guard there, and I just fell in love. I was like, oh my gosh, I wanna be that one day. So, I got asked to fill in a hole, because one of the members got sick, and I've just been with it ever since, because it's just a big part of my life now, and I can't imagine my life without it.
I can relate to Chloe on that, as my sister was a captain of Color Guard, and I went to one of her shows, and I thought, man, this is really boring, because I wanted to be doing something else. But then, as the show started, and as the music started playing, and as these people just came on this, like, big tarp of just colorful, like, it was so pretty. And I remember sitting there, and I was just like, this is so mesmerizing. This is so, something out of this world, and I felt like, I wanna share this with the world, and I wanna do something like this to where the point where, like, I'm telling a story. And as of right now, our Color Guard, or Winter Guard, is practicing at this moment, as we speak, to go to Dayton, Ohio, WGI, and we have this long bus drive planned. We have a lot of places to stop at, like malls, but we also plan to work really, really hard so that we can make it to Champions, or like at least something up there, because we love, I'm so excited. Speaking of that, it just makes me really excited, but Winter Guard is something I love so much, and I wanna share it with the world. I share it with my friends. I share it with my family, to the point where they're like, God, just stop talking about it. But, Winter Guard is just so much to me. It's like my life, and like, without it, I don't know where I would be.
That's awesome. Congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
High School Board, Jim Galvin, AD at Moundsview High School. We've got some extraordinary students here today. We're excited to be outside finally for all our spring activities, but reflecting a little bit, it was an awesome winter. We've got representatives here from our wrestling team, Science Olympiad, and speech.
Wrestlers, you can start here.
Hello, my name is Brady Swenson. I was our forty-five-pounder this year.
My name's Apollo Ashby. I was our one-seventy and one-sixty-pounder this year.
So, I'm the junior captain this year. One thing we do at Moundsview Wrestling is we encourage anyone and everyone to join wrestling, and you don't need any experience, and it's not like when you wrestle and you're not good, you're not gonna get any matches. We make sure we have everyone wrestle, whether it's on JV or varsity. So, this year, we were thirty-one and one as a team, which has never been done before at Moundsview. And then we also sent nine state entrants to state, which is pretty cool. And then, we only have one senior graduating, so we definitely have a pretty good year next year.
Yeah, like you said, we had plenty of new guys join, whether it's ninth graders or even juniors in high school. We've had plenty of guys join in ninth grade, or when I was in ninth grade, and have stuck with it. And this year, we had a very successful season. We pretty much won most of the, or no, we won all of the team tournaments that we went to, but we sent some, like, really big individual tournaments up in Fargo, like Rumble on the Red, which we took fourth overall individually in team points. And then state individually, we took fourth again. But we were not able to go to Team State in the duo meet, because we lost to Stillwater, being our only one loss. And yeah, like you said, we had five state place winners, breaking the record of three from previous years. And this year's grade point average overall was three-point-five-eight for the whole team, so that was pretty cool. We had about nine guys get the section academic award, so yeah, that was pretty cool.
Thanks.
Very cool. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great.
Hi, I'm Ellen, a junior at Moundsview High School.
And I'm Emily, a senior at Moundsview High School.
We're two of the Science Olympiad captains this year.
All right, so we're just gonna introduce exactly what Science Olympiad is. Basically, in Minnesota, we have three divisions, our elementary, our middle school, and our high school division. So, we compete in the high school division, and throughout the year, we compete in all sorts of invitationals across the country. We've done Wisconsin and Minnesota this year. And if you do well in those, and then we compete in regionals, which is hosted by Moundsview High School every year in February. We won regionals this year, so we advanced to state. And then after state, if you win state, you advance to Nationals. So, Science Olympiad, think of it sort of as a high school track meet. You've got all sorts of events, but instead of testing your speed or agility, you test your knowledge and your diverse, like, interest and work in making something in science.
So, I've been part of Science Olympiad at Moundsview since freshman year, and before that, since fifth grade in the elementary division and then the middle school division. And so you may have heard of Moundsview Science Olympiad's accomplishments in previous years, but we wanted to share that recently, we won the state competition, so we're off to Nationals in Wichita, Kansas. So, this is our first time taking the first place at state since 2019, so we're very excited to represent Moundsview and continue our legacy. So, I know for myself and other members for our team, Science Olympiad is a really enriching program. We get to explore niche topics in science in depth. For example, in environmental chemistry, which is an event that I'm doing at Nationals, I'm studying different types of aqueous systems and their compositions, and policies for US's bodies of water and keeping them clean. I also got to learn how to perform and analyze different chemical labs on water quality. So, Science Olympiad has definitely encouraged many students to pursue a career in science, and we're really grateful for Moundsview for supporting a strong STEM program.
Yeah, so I think one of the charms of Science Olympiad as a whole is how wide your range of topics are. So, we have like twenty-two or so events, I believe, and those range from anything, from like rocks and minerals, to building a bridge, to learning about astronomy and the stars, to learning about cell biology, or anatomy and physiology. So, there's like a huge range of things that you learn, and that's super fun, because you get to be introduced to a ton of, like, diverse disciplines and scientific knowledge that you wouldn't be able to explore in high school. So, like Ellen said, Science Olympiad is a program that's really introduced me to my passion for science, and I definitely credit it for my love for science and my intention of pursuing science in the future as well. So, one of my highlights of this season has definitely been winning state. We compete, our Division B, which is our middle school competition, and our middle school division and our high school division, compete together at state, and we were able to take first place with our middle school team from Chippewa this year, which is super awesome, because we'll be traveling to Nationals with them later this May. So, it's super fun seeing kids in our booths that we were in four years ago, and seeing that legacy continue, and we really hope that Moundsview Science Olympiad program can continue growing in the future as it has in recent years.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Harini, and I'm a senior, and I've been on the Mountie Speech Team for four years, and now I'm one of the captains. I would say that this year, our team was extremely successful. We captains spent a lot of time trying to recruit new members, and we had like over twenty new members this year, so our team was the biggest this year than it has been in previous years, which was amazing. Also, at Sections, as a team, we got third place, which hasn't happened in a while, and we had two people qualify for state and four people who are off to a national tournament. But the most exciting thing that this year happened was Moundsview officially started a debate team. So, now we are the Moundsview Speech and Debate Team. The debate team's pretty small currently, but we are working to get it to grow bigger and bigger, and they did really, really well this year for just starting out. They actually had a feature in the Dave Ryan Show debating whether pineapple on pizza was acceptable or not.
It is not.
It is not. And yeah, I'm really excited to see what both our Speech and Debate Team do in the future. The Stillwater head coach, which Stillwater is the team that dominates our Sections, even said that our team was the team to look out for, for the future. So, I really do believe that our team will continue growing and hopefully dominating our section as well.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Does that wrap us up?
Yeah.
All right, well, one more?
We have student reps here tonight.
Next agenda, so we'll wrap this up and move to that. So, I just wanna take a moment, you know, blown away by the range of activities that have been reflected tonight, and all of the successes across the program. So, a huge credit to Mr. Fink and Mr. Galvin for shepherding that in our buildings, and to all of you for the important work that you're doing. I echo Yolanda's statements about the mentorship. Like, I think we see that come through in the passion that you have for our district, and it shows. So, we're proud to be sending, it sounds like, most of you on a bus in the next couple of weeks to go somewhere and do something. We really appreciate the work that you're doing. Wish you all the best of luck, and hope to have you back here to hear more about your successes in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Now, we'll go to item 2.2, Student Representative Reports, and we will welcome our reps from, I believe we have Irondale and Moundsview in the house. But I did hear that Irondale has been replaced by the robot, so tough break on that one. Come on over. Welcome.
Hi, so my name is Angelica. I've been here before, but I'm coming as the leader of Earth Club. And so, next Saturday, not this Saturday, next Saturday, April 22nd is Earth Day. So, next week, for the week leading up to Earth Day, Irondale has a bunch of activities going on to kind of help facilitate learning and like helping the earth. So, we actually have a spirit week next week, and some of our days include Meatless Monday, so it's just kind of like, try not to eat meat, right? And then also one Flower Power, which is my favorite, so you can just kind of wear like floral print or flowers. And then, secondly, we actually have a park cleanup at Long Lake on Earth Day. So, we had amazing turnout last year. You know, we teamed up with NHS, and I'm super excited for this year to kind of see where we grow from there. And then, thirdly, we are also, student councils are partnering with Moundsview to do a clothing drive. So, all week, we're gonna have like a big box in the front commons, so any student can donate any clothes, and then we're hoping to donate those to organizations in our community.
My name, oop, my name is Ella. I've also been here before. I am going to talk about the Polar Plunge, which was an event that happened last month. This was done in March to raise money for, in support of Unified Club and the Minnesota Special Olympics. We had a really large turnout from our entire student body, both participating and supporting. It was really fun to see, and we had a very nice photo of Mr. Seifong doing a cannonball into the dunk tank, so if you wanna check that out, it's on the Irondale Instagram. We also had our West Side Orchestra Festival, which is a really cool opportunity for our orchestra, both at Irondale and for the elementary schools that feed into Irondale. We had fourth graders from all over the west side of our district come. We had a combined concert with all the fourth graders, and then orchestras nine through twelve. And this year's freshmen are actually the first group of fourth graders to go through this program, so it was a really nice full-circle moment. And then, our spring sports are starting up, and we, they're getting ready for their first games of the season, as well as our spring play, The Dining Room, which will happen at the end of this month.
Thank you for being here. I will speak for the whole board, but we can't wait to see Supernit Lenis send us a Flower Power Tuesday picture next week. It's gonna be great. All right, thank you for being here. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Leah.
And I'm Jackie.
And we're both seniors at Moundsview, and we are representing Moundsview to give you some of the updates. You already heard about our wrestling team, as well as our speech in Scioly, but there's a few more things happening at Moundsview.
Yep, so the Moundsview Deca Store has earned an outstanding international achievement honors at the highest gold standard for its student-run, school-based retail entertainment. honors at the highest gold standard for its student-run, school-based retail enterprise. It is one of the 613 schools in the world to receive this award.
Also, this year, the Moundsview Orchestra, over spring break, traveled to Italy, and we are both members of the orchestra that went. It was an amazing time. We went to three different cities and performed in cathedrals there. It was so cool. We got to play in Santa Margarita, Florence, and Rome. When we were in Rome, we actually had a performance that was so packed, it was limited to standing room only, and it was such an amazing event, and just, like, felt crazy to be there performing, and something we're going to remember for the rest of our lives. So you have some signed pictures from the orchestra, just giving a big thank you for your support, letting us go on this trip, because it meant so much to us, and it was so exciting.
Yeah. But back to sports. Both the boys' and girls' basketball teams finished their season strong, winning their quarterfinal section playoff games, but then were ousted in their summer final, in the semifinal bracket by the number one seed of their section. And the boys', the boys' women dive team broke two Moundsview records at the state meet. The medley relay team of Joshua Wallen, Nathan Hare, Stephen Zhao, and Justin Wang took sixth place and earned an all-state honors. Their time of a minute and 35 seconds beat the record from 2007. Joshua Wallen also broke the school record in backstroke, taking third place at his meet. His time of 50.12 seconds earned an all-state honors and an all-American consideration.
Our school drama team is also now preparing their Little Shop of Horrors presentation. The prom-themed Secret Garden is in the final planning, and we're really excited for that as seniors. And we're also having our final preparations for a great graduation ceremony at Maturi Pavilion. So Jackie and I are also both captains of our robotics team, so we know you saw the Irondale team here earlier. We represent the other section, high school section, of First Robotics. So what they were in was called the First Robotics Competition, and we're in First Tech Challenge. So this means a little bit smaller robots, not quite the grand scale you saw here, but smaller teams, so we're, we closely work together. Our team has nine members, most of whom are seniors at Moundsview here, and really excitingly, this year, we went to the state competition. So Moundsview actually has, um, three teams that exist within its high school, so we are considered community teams, but have members who go to the school. Um, so our team, Spontaneous Construction, went, as well as two other teams who we mentored and helped to get there, um, called the CIA and Potential Energy. So while we were there, each of the different teams was nominated for awards, including 3D printing awards, um, innovation awards for the robot, as well as connection awards, so making sure that we, um, reached out to our community, you know, talking with people, getting them excited about robotics, as well as talking to engineers to help us learn, as well as spread the word of robotics.
Yeah. Our team, Spontaneous Construction, ended up as the state champions, and we are competing at the World Robotics Championship down in Houston next week to represent Minnesota and Moundsview. And we were, we, um, recognized as the state champions for our global impact and outreach, as well as our innovative sort of drive that we're happy to bring to the world level. Now, in the past, Moundsview has a legacy of having some of the best Minnesota teams, as well as world-class First Tech Challenge teams, such as High Differential, Titanium Allies, and the Ponytail Posse. The current generation of teams is no exception. Potential Energy and the CIA are on the path to becoming some of the best teams in Minnesota, already winning multiple awards and making a huge impact in the community. All the Moundsview teams share one thing in common: we aren't officially associated with Moundsview High School due to the lack of school support and school funding, and all of our teams are instead classified as community or neighborhood teams. So this meant that we weren't able to represent our high school and our district. So that's why this year, our team, Spontaneous Construction, sat down with our principal at Moundsview to discuss the details of creating a Moundsview First Tech Challenge Club. We wanted to start this club to help support future Moundsview FTC teams and their support in the Minnesota robotics community. The support for the school will help the next generation of robotics teams, and have the Moundsview, and have Moundsview known for educating some of the best FTC teams in the state of Minnesota. And the First Tech Challenge program is helping further students in their STEM careers, STEM career education, and developing many essential life skills, such as networking, public speaking, and many more. Now, if you want to help the next generation of Moundsview First Tech Challenge teams, feel free to contact us through our business card, which you can see our email, as well as many other social medias, if you want to check out our crazy robotics adventures.
Alright.
Yeah. And if you're also interested in learning about, more about the benefits of First Tech Challenge, you can read, um, the, there's actually articles, the newspaper for this month for Short View. There is the front page article talking about the First Tech Challenge program, as well as our team and our, the benefits that the program has taught us, as well as our adventure to represent Short View to the world.
Thank you.
Very cool. Thank you, congratulations. Well, I think all of these incredible students have left a tough act to follow for the Superintendent, Assistant Director Coffey, and Assistant Director, sorry, so good luck, um, for the rest of the meeting, uh, but we will carry on. Um, gonna move to item 2.3, announcements. I'll ask Shawna to acknowledge the gifts.
Alright, thank you. There were eight gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $3,788.10, and there were 24 gifts received for the Ralph Frieder Food Shop this period for a total of $25,178. It's recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thank you. Incredible generosity in our community. Um, additional announcements, upcoming meetings, April 25th at 7:00 PM, a regular meeting of the board, and May 4th at 5:00 PM, a work session of the board, both here at the district center. Move to item 2.4, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Lennox.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jonathan. Um, tonight I'm gonna continue in the theme of student recognition. Um, there may be slides, I'm not sure if we're seeing them, but because we have a guest in the, in the room, I am going to change the order. I'm not sure where the slides are on, but today I want to recognize one of our seniors from, from Irondale, uh, high school. Senior Alaa Killens was offered and has now accepted an appointment to the Air Force Academy. Alaa, that's an incredible appointment. We are just so very, very proud of you, truly an honor, and we want to wish you all the best, uh, as you go to attend the Air Force Academy and all you do in the future. So congratulations, well deserved. We're very, very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thanks for being here tonight, and all you do for our. And I also want to take this opportunity to recognize some of, uh, our students for their outstanding performance on the ACT exam. This year, we actually have eight students who earned the top score, 36 points on that exam. They are Junior Maeve Edgar, Senior Sophia Wang, Senior Mateo Nikusi, Senior Jack Omen, Junior Zoe Tennebaum, uh, Junior Michael Wang, Senior Colette Whalen, and Senior Leah Wood. Yep. And, yeah, there you go, right there, with us as well. Um, this, I, this is so notable. I, I mean, here's what we know about a 36. Less than 1%, actually, 1/4 of 1% of students who take the ACT receive that top score. So an incredible, incredible showing. Uh, congratulations to all of these outstanding students. Nice job. Way to go.
Alright, well, you kept the theme going. I love it.
Yep, correct.
We'll move to item 3.0, and as we do that, um, those of you who are still here, you're welcome to join us, but like, it is 75 degrees outside, so if you want to be excused, um, now would be a great time to enjoy the rest of the night. Thank you for being here, congratulations. Um, item 3.0, the approval of the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to item 4.1, everybody's favorite and most riveting topic, policy reviews. Superintendent Lennox.
Yeah, and tonight, just a very, very brief report regarding the ongoing policy work that, uh, you guys do as, as school board members. Uh, as part of that three-year, uh, policy review cycle, the board had the chance to review the 5,000 series policies. Uh, at your last work session was, was, uh, Thursday, April 6th. Uh, there are 12 policies in that series. Based on the review, neither board members nor administration had recommendations for edits or updates. So at this time, uh, that series, the policies in that series, uh, will be marked as reviewed, uh, date will be updated, and they'll be added to the policy page on the district website. So just thank you again, as board members, for all your, your work and your ongoing commitment to keeping our policies accurate and up to date.
Great, we'll reflect that as reviewed.
Correct.
I'm gonna move us to item 5.1, termination of probationary staff, and welcome Director Coffey. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, so tonight, we're looking at the, um, non-renewal of probationary teachers. Minnesota, Minnesota statute 122A.40 defines the probationary period for teachers as the first three consecutive years of a teacher's first teaching experience in a single district. And then once a teacher has completed the initial three years and they move to a, a new district, they serve a one-year probationary period. During that probationary period, an annual teaching contract can be non-renewed for any reason, um, including performance, budgetary staffing reasons, licensure reasons, and teachers who, in some cases, were hired for one-year positions. A probationary teacher is deemed to have been re-employed for the next school year unless the board gives written notice by July 1. Um, we're taking action now to not only meet that deadline, but also to provide an opportunity for teachers to pursue other employment options. Principals have discussed the non-renewal recommendation with all teachers prior to night, tonight's meeting. Um, and unless there's questions, we're asking the board tonight for approval of the non-renewal of probationary teachers.
Any questions for Julie? If not, I would entertain a motion, um, to terminate the teacher's listed attachment A pursuant to the attached resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item 6.1, um, DOB goal update, review of instructional coaching model. Welcome, this might be the first time you've been in front of the board.
I think it's the second time, but I think you weren't able to join us the first time.
Alright, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Heidi Sari, Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction, just here to kind of give you another update on our instructional coaching model. I think we've got a couple slides for you tonight, um, with some general information, and then we want to share some teacher, um, and I, coaching experience as well. So, uh, just a few things about instructional coaching. Why, why do we have it in our district? Uh, we want to make sure that we have equitable classroom environments and experiences. We want to ensure that we are providing professional development for our teachers, um, as individuals, but also within their professional learning communities. We know from research that instructional coaching helps build not just individual, but collective efficacy across buildings, and when done well, it can create a high-quality instruction because it personalizes the learning experience for our students. So the goal for us is that our coaches will support individuals and PLCs in the goals that they choose each year. Those goals are aligned to our building goals that are established by the building, um, leadership team each, uh, each fall. A quick update on our timeline, we've been doing professional development with our current instructional strategies facilitators or coaches, instructional coaches. We have been, as I mentioned, we mentioned in January, they are working with the Center for Educational Leadership because it aligns very nicely with the professional development our principals have already had. They have completed three of their five cycles with CEL. So we had that launch day in September. On October, they talked about how do we set goals with, with teachers? Um, they talked in December and worked on, um, coaching setting outcomes, how do we plan certain lessons to create additional student engagement and success in the classroom? January was just rescheduled to this past week due to snow in January, uh, but that was all around debriefing a conversation after having been in a classroom to observe, um, the teacher and talk about some of the strategies that were used. And then we will wrap up the year with, um, pulling all of those three pieces together, what that might look like as a coaching cycle, and then planning ahead for next year. The other thing we've been working on, um, in addition to the professional development, is creating, um, some recommendations for how this will roll out next year. So knowing that this is a shift in some of our, uh, coaches' work, we have pulled together a team of our current coaches, administrators, and then actually the MBEA president as well to provide some recommendations. They reviewed, um, some additional research, and they looked at some data, and they created a framework where they discussed, um, how would we define coaching? What should that coaching cycle look like? So some technical pieces about how much time that might take, and then really defining the role of a coach in Moundsview. This feedback is going out to three separate, um, uh, groups. Moundsview Education Association leadership team will review it, um, we will have our executive team here at the district center review it, and then the coordinating council, which consists of both administrators and teachers from across the district, will also, um, review that. Individual buildings, then, the goal would be that we'll have, um, some structure this spring to help them as they plan for the 23, 24 school year, and we are on track to meet that goal. So we just wanted to provide tonight some reflections on that training. We're gonna start with a few of our current instructional strategies facilitators, a couple from the, um, elementary level, and a couple from the secondary level.
Hi, my name is Nicole Rash, and I work at Pike Lake Education Center, and one of the, um, biggest takeaways that I've had from working with the Center for Educational Leadership is, um, I've worked both with individual teachers and with a PLC, and within my PLC, one of the most exciting things to see was during our planning conversation, how the guiding questions really led to them finding a cycle that was going to be most impactful for their students, but was also going to guide their own instructional practices. And it was a little bit different than what they've done before, but in the end, the conversations that came out, um, through our coaching cycle were very successful, and we were able to kind of transform their instruction and the way it impacts students, and that was a really powerful experience. Another thing that I think this training has really helped us focus on in our building is how important the student experience is, and the two words that really stick with me on a regular basis is happy and proud. How can our teachers be happy and proud at the end of the day, and how can our students be happy and proud? And how as a coach can I be happy and proud about the work that we're putting forth? It's been a really powerful and positive experience.
Hi, I'm Boyd Weger. I'm one of the ISFs at Chippewa Middle School, um, where I also teach integrated science and math. Um, just wanted to talk a little bit about the coaching training that the ISFs have been going through, uh, this school year. Um, first, I just want to, uh, let you know as board members that this has been just excellent PD. I'm in year 17 of teaching, and, uh, this is some of the best PD that I've ever been to. It's, um, well-thought, it's a well-thought-out coaching model. Um, I think it's gonna work great in the Moundsview School District, and, uh, I believe that, I truly believe that it's, it's been money well-spent. So, um, so I want to just kind of vouch for the, the, uh, the excellence of the professional development first. Secondly, I want to say that, um, it is really grounded, what do we want student learning to look like? That's what it's all about. Um, it's helping teachers, uh, become better, and, and so I think that not only, not only, uh, are the teachers coached going to be, uh, gonna improve their practice, but the coaches are gonna improve their own practice. And so I'm excited about, um, as I'm going through this coaching journey, how that's gonna help me, um, become an even better teacher in my own classroom.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Hansen from Chippewa Middle School. One of the most impactful things about the work that I've been doing with CEEL this year has really been the focus on student experience and learning, and how coaching can empower teachers to make that change for their students. It's supporting equity in our classrooms and schools, and it's also helping teachers grow as professionals. They do a great job of really, um, marrying those two things together. I just started coaching this year, and I've already seen some impacts on supporting teachers in real time in their classrooms on their goals for the students that they see. It's very personal, and it's, um, very wonderful to watch it all come together. One of the things that I hope to carry, um, with me into coaching next year is just the spirit of CEEL. Um, they really have a vision and belief in their program to really focus on supporting both students and teachers, so that we can have that impact that we all hope to have as educators. It's been a wonderful experience so far, and I look forward to continuing this work in years to come.
Angela Alteringer, Sunnyside. Working with Sal this year has helped me to have a more clear focus on the student experience and the importance of increasing teacher efficacy. The instructional coach is a thought The instructional coach is a thought partner for teachers and is creating a safe space for teacher reflection and growth. SEL has provided us with some great guiding questions throughout the coaching process that allow teachers the time and the space to reflect on their practice, thus becoming their own problem solvers, and the coach is just the facilitator of that process.
And then, we have just a couple of quick clips from some principals, since they also join us for the coaching professional development in the mornings. So our first one is Todd Durand, the current principal at Pike Lake Kindergarten Center. He's been with our district for a long time, and so we thought we would ask him about how this is impacting his school as well.
I've enjoyed being a part of the CEL coaching training that we've been conducting here in the district. As a school leader, meeting with others and also with our district coaches has been really exciting. We've been talking about shared vocabulary, common vocabulary, ways that we, as a school and school system, can continue to enhance what's happening in our classrooms by supporting teachers, helping them grow in their practice, helping them reflect on their practice, and ultimately create better outcomes for students has been really exciting. It's been really energizing as well. The coaches that are helping our, all the leadership teams and others learn and grow here in the school have been very engaging and are definitely listening to what we're doing here in Moundsview and trying to provide a lot of feedback and support so that we can continue to grow individually and bring that back to our schools to enhance the student experience.
And then, Kristy Abbott, formerly an assistant principal at Turtle, a principal then at Snail Lake, and current principal from Island Lake Elementary.
Aligning our work has actually already had an impact. Having a common foundation across the district is so powerful. The work coaches do is so important. One thing I'd like to focus on next year is teacher efficacy. We've got such good teachers. I'd like to build on their strengths, use what they know to keep growing. Coaching is one way to do this. As an administrator, it's my job to create a culture where coaching is embraced, just something we do. Our work with CEL has helped me develop a clear vision for my role in coaching. I'm looking forward to implementing everything we've learned and accomplishing great things.
And then, lastly, Lindsay Samick, current principal at Highview Middle School.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Samick. I'm the principal at Highview Middle School, and it has been a great opportunity to participate in this CEL alongside my coaches. It matched just so beautifully with the training that we got as administrators about how we go in and provide instructional feedback to teachers, and I feel like it just really sets us up really nicely to partner with those coaches and help teachers have what they need to continue to build their skill set and shift and change in their teaching moves to impact student learning. As we move forward, I think we've been doing a lot with our coaches coaching individual teachers, and so that opportunity to move on toward the impact that they can have if they are coaching into a professional learning community, and how they can help activate some of that learning collaboratively and really impacting that active learning publicly with each other about ways that we can improve our practice.
And that is it. Any questions that you have for me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Awesome work. Wanted to get the update. Move to item 7.1, additional updates. We'll start with AMSD and legislative. Mr. Demme.
The legislature took a little break last week.
It was nice.
But before the break, they did a $2.2 billion budget target for 2425 fiscal year for education. What does that entail? You know, we always pay attention to the formula. The formula would be proposed by the governor right now is four percent the first year and then two percent inflation ongoing. The Senate has proposed four percent the first year and five percent the second year with no inflation ongoing. They recently passed funding for student lunches and breakfasts. There are a whole lot of proposals out on the table. The educational omnibus bills are long. There's a lot of stuff in there, and it'll be interesting what stays in and what stays out. I mean, AMSD is very active. We have another meeting on Friday morning, and there's just a lot of work to be done, but it's, there's plenty of stuff happening in the education space up at the Capitol. So that's it.
We've known this was going to be a big year for education. Appreciate all of your work, because I know you're spending more time than usual up there advocating for our district and for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to northeast Metro 916, Sandra.
We had our monthly meeting, I guess it was last week, and, you know, probably one of the biggest focus topics we've had over the past year has been on staff vacancies and how that impacts our ability to provide placements for our students that need 916 services, particularly in the Fed setting for. And, you know, I guess we're, the 916 leadership is really working with all the member superintendents and member special ed directors to try to make some changes and address the issues, and there's progress in that way. However, you know, the vacancies still just prevail. Ninety-one vacancies, ninety-one staff vacancies at 916, which is up from a year ago. I think a year ago was about eighty-three. Fourteen are teacher vacancies. So it's a significant problem, and I think it's just really, you know, I don't know what we collectively as employers and as education system do about some of these vacancies and trying to make this work attractive. It's just we've got big demographic issues, just as far as like our workforce is shrinking at the, you know, the age group that, you know, takes over for everyone who's retiring is just a shrinking numbers. So it's just a numbers issue, and we have to figure out ways to be attractive. Employers make this work rewarding. So anyway, I think it's, you know, we, the issues we have are just expounded and magnified with 916 even more so. So we continue to focus on that, and, you know, the superintendent's really looking at that, different ways to fulfill or fill all those vacancies, but it remains an issue. So anyway, with that, I guess that's just probably the most important thing to report back for 916, and the work will continue.
Thank you. Move to item 8.1, school board member reports. Does anybody have anything to share? I see Diane.
I do. So as Irondale mentioned, I stopped by to see the polar plunge. It was a very, very cold day, and I just give so much credit to those students and staff that ended up jumping, and then also...
But you weren't one of them?
No, no. I passed this year. And then, also went to chalkboard capers. It was so great to have that back. So just kudos to Stacy Vanderport, our teachers and staff that, you know, participated. It was great, very entertaining, and it was just good to have them back.
Very cool. Other board member updates.
I also attended chalkboard capers, and it's great, a community event, and the MBEA put on a great show, and they've got a great auditorium at Irondale, and it's just a joy to be in it, and that's fabulous. And one of my favorite events, our Native American students on Saturday, the 15th, from noon to five, are having their powwow over at Highview. Recommend people stop by. You can stop by for a little bit or a whole lot. It's a really lovely event for their students' host for our community, so thank you.
Any other updates? I'm going to close this with two quick thoughts. First, as I listened to one of our educators on the screen earlier talk about being happy and proud, that's how I feel after this meeting. It was awesome to see so many of our students and our educators and the passion they have for this place. It really is what makes Moundsview schools Moundsview schools. So a great night, which, I don't know that I always feel I would leave the board meeting, but it was an uplifting night. And then, just a reminder, and I feel like I'm going to channel my inner John Tinula for those of you who served with him, but as it's seventy-five, eighty degrees outside and kids are back outdoors, I had to remind my kids to look both ways before they cross the streets. I would just encourage folks to remember that spring has sprung, and watch out for our kiddos as they're getting off buses and running around the neighborhoods and, you know, doing what kids do, which is getting out and playing. So an exciting season ahead. With that, is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.